All right, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gostown School Board meeting. I will call this meeting to order at 7:01 if we can stand and say the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we start, I do want to recognize that we have a school board member on the phone. When I say your name, just say you're here, and if you're alone, Dan Cludier.
I am here. I am alone.
All right, thank you. Correspondence?
Just two things this evening. We thought the board would appreciate seeing a special holiday card from the Gostown High School FBA, the Future Business Leaders of America. Mrs. Scarlett does a remarkable job with that program. And also, this is the public notice for your budget hearing and deliberative session and filing of candidates.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commendations, good news. Amanda, go ahead.
Sure. This past Thursday, we had the winter concert, which was a huge success, so kudos to them. And then, I just wanted to shout out Sylvia Lewis. She has been covering our Grizzly Den, and it is making a huge impact on student learning and motivation. I have several students who are in my prep who go to see her, and you walk by, and they're all, you might not expect it with certain students, but they are sitting there, and they're all focused and working, and she is keeping them on top of everything. And so, the Grizzly Den is a huge success.
And I would thank you, Amanda. I would just share with the board, that's the position that we added as a 504 case manager to provide additional support. So, thank you, I appreciate it. And Sylvia is a special person.
Yeah, it has been a wonderful asset. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ellen.
I know we did, our administration presented thank yous to our bus drivers. I didn't get to make it, however, I did get to speak with the bus driver, who drives around one of my grandchildren. And I said, "Did you get ...?" She was back in tears. She was so happy and so grateful, and she and the monitor who's on the bus were just blown away and extremely thankful and happy that this was done. So, I just wanted to pass that on.
Well, and there was a video from GTV, if anybody saw it.
I saw a piece of it, yeah.
Bus drivers, so that was great.
Yep.
Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else? Go ahead, Rhonda.
I had the opportunity to attend the mental health wellness with John, Chief Justice, John Broderick, and I believe Dr. Levin.
Yep.
Unfortunately, it wasn't super well attended, but there was a lot of parents there, and they're trying to get the ball rolling on, it's mainly around awareness. And I have to say, the statistics are a bit staggering about mental health wellness, not only in Gostown, but New Hampshire and the whole United States. So, it's something I'm hoping at some point, we could bring that to the board, just to, at least some of the statistics about what's going on. And of course, this is all happening before COVID. As you can imagine, COVID has also had an impact, so it was a very interesting presentation.
And we have partnered with Judge Broderick for many years, so he's been here a number of times. He's a very, very good man, an incredible advocate for mental health awareness, and has a powerful story. His narrative and the journey of his family that he shares openly is really pretty and incredible story. So, I would share again, I don't think we can do enough to take care of the social, emotional needs of our kids, and we're very appreciative to the judge.
Thank you, Rhonda. Anyone else for commendations, good news? Oh, Terry.
So, the middle school had their winter concert, and just wanted to say a special thank you to Superintendent Balky for doing his best rendition of Eric Clapton.
Awesome. Thanks, Terry.
Has that been put on GTV?
I don't know, but I saw it live, so.
We got a concert t-shirt. And Mr. Saunders does a great job, but he had me sit with my back to the audience, which felt weird, but he wanted the kids to be able to hear and, I don't know. But I felt badly that I was sitting with my back to the crowd, but it was fun, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Terry. Anyone else? All right, public comment, you don't see anyone. So, we'll move on. We have Dr. McMurray here tonight to give a presentation update on the Dino remediation. Do we have that in our packet?
We have, his presentation should be the first thing in your packet. It looks like this. So, in addition to welcoming Mike, and again, Mike's position this year is a position that we created with the board's support, so we'd again like to thank the board, the creation of this position. We had thought, so this position, we had kind of conceptualized last winter. So, almost a year ago at this point, we had thought that we would be moving into kind of a recovery stage of the pandemic. That's clearly not the case. But nonetheless, the creation of this position and all the great things that Mike has been able to do this year, I also wanted to welcome and to recognize Heather Kelly. Heather works in the business office, and she has a significant role in the management of all the grants, all the activities. And Mr. Gross had asked her if she would be able to attend, and if there are any questions about kind of the nuances. Again, there's a lot of details that go into things. So, it's one thing to have an idea about creating a position and how to do it, but then all the nuts and bolts and the logistical elements that need to occur, that's what's happened with Mike, with Heather, and the team, and they've really done a great job. So, I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks, appreciate the opportunity to be here, and some of you guys I've spoken to before, one capacity or another. My experience, I've been a middle school educator for probably eight years in Gostown. I was a dean of students, but it's one of those positions where you connect with the kids and you see kids in all facets of their school day. So, it always provided me a good opportunity to really get to know every kid and families. So, that part, as this position was kind of organized and developing, kind of lent itself to kind of who I know, what I know, the families I know. I carry many other certifications as well. I was a school psych at one time, so I get the mental health, the SEL piece. Those are all tenants of this grant. There was a remediation piece, there was a social-emotional piece, and then there was an acceleration piece. So, we've kind of started, we started putting kind of things in play. You know, I'll put it out there too, I think the programs that you can create are only as good as the people implementing them. So, having been an educator in this district, certainly having feet in the middle school, you know who's capable of what, and you kind of know what needs to be done to help kids. And as Brian said, you know, the intent was for recovery, and we're still kind of in this, in the murkiness of what's been going on. But you got a PowerPoint in there? I can kind of quickly skim over. Any questions, feel free to ask. So, general overview, we have, and I've been working with Heather quite a bit on time sheets, and we'll talk about some of that and kind of how that looks and what unfolds with those supports and services. District-wide, we've used 511 hours so far. That's a fairly large number. Last year was about 1,280 hours for supports. We've kind of crafted it so it's a little more aligned with the grant one, but also broken down by building level, what's occurring, what's happening. So, elementary school, it's very much focused on targeted supports. Keep in mind, some of these kids have never been in school, or they, you know, remote learning for a year and a half, so there's been a lot of significant gaps. Math, as Brian kind of pushed out when this was all going forward, math was a big area of need, focus, state, national, local assessments of math, obviously is a challenging area. Elementary school is a lot of work being done with tutors right now in math, and trying to bridge those gaps. It's really the bulk of where the remediation and the filling the gaps are. We hope to keep pushing, expanding those services and supports, trying to connect kids more with some of the programming being offered. Some of it I'll put out there. One thing that we've been met with is teachers are tired, and they have their own things going on as well. So, as much as we try to lean and push to kind of get to solicitation, sometimes we need to step back a little and give breath and grace to some of these people. So, I will tell you, the people that we have already aligned are probably the top-notch people who are willing and committed to give what they have, and they're doing it with everything they have. So, I will put that out there, and I would say that for elementary teachers, middle school teachers, and high school. So, very much targeted support at the elementary level. Middle school level, we have some homework dens, we have some math tutoring supports by grade level. Some of you who have parents at the middle school may have seen some of the messaging that's gone out. We've kind of run that through guidance, knowing that guidance has regular ongoing meetings with team levels, identifying who those students are. We built a lot of capacity and a lot of processes in place to get those kids from day one, beginning of the school year. Interestingly, and we'll go through some of the data in there when we break it down, but you're going to see some of the comparisons between 504 IEP and regular ed students. And I'll talk about some of that because it does fall within the, under the umbrella of the grant. Middle school, 174 hours to date, as of 12:10. And then, high school, 176 hours. High school, we have homework dens, which have been kind of up and running. I'll talk about some of that specific data as well. And we're rolling out another program, which will be exciting, and I'll share that as we get to that slide. 215 students, there's 196 students there, and there were a couple that were added, bottom of that slide on general overview. It kind of gives a breakdown of the building level students. Again, we'll get a little more into that as we go, a couple further slides. Again, elementary school, you'll see that number. That's really remedial and targeted instruction. A lot of it's math, some of it's going to be SEL, as one of our buildings is pushing things through for the second half of the year after the holiday. Middle school, you'll see, those are not all tutoring numbers. We had some enrichment opportunities, which I'll talk about as well, which kind of worked on the SEL and some of the acceleration pieces. And the high school, we got about 55 students currently who are accessing some of the program we've got at high school. Again, I'll talk about that in the numbers. That's just kind of global overview. Some of the things that we've kind of pushed forward, trying to build more leadership throughout the district, some of that soliciting participation of staff. Like I said, we do feel like we have the right staff connecting with kids right now, and they're working tirelessly to push things forward, and we're always looking for more staff who are willing to, and that's a cell at our end at each building level, is trying to push things through, knowing that we're probably not reaching every kid out there who needs something right now. But it's our objective to keep pushing and trying to find and target those kids, and find the staff who are willing to contribute and step up in that. Currently, 38 staff are engaged in some sort of remediation, tutoring, enrichment, or acceleration program. 38 staff, that is a lot of staff. When you look at Heather, that is 38 time sheets that we have being processed currently right now. It's a lot. It's monumental. Some of it's a couple days a week, some of it's one hour a week. Again, it's all connecting back to kids who are needing something for the social-emotional piece, for the math piece, or for the, just the homework completion, because there's not someplace at home where, you know, they can kind of get the work done to maintain their progress. Again, we still strive to meet every kid along the way, and we're still trying to hunt those kids down and patch them up with some of these resources. Some of the enrichment activities, you'll see below, there's some STEM things going on, video production, literacy, chess. I'll speak on chess because it's kind of a personal, you know, when we were kind of dreaming this up, chess was kind of one of those things, and there's research behind chess for executive functioning and all those skills. It's something we've been truly trying to push. In fact, we kind of beat the DOE to the punch on that, because the DOE unrolled something shortly after. We'd already had, kind of, this thing was growing legs.
Where do you think they got the idea?
And again, it goes back to some of the staff, and connecting staff who have passions and unique interests in helping promote that, and we feel like we got the right person for that as well, like all the other programs. SAT prep, which we're rolling out, I'll talk a little more about that, because it's a little broader form than SAT prep, but it's an acceleration piece we're doing at the high school. SEL groups going on, homework dens, and math tutoring throughout the district. Kind of talked about the elementary school level, targeted math tutoring supports, grades one through four. Very data-heavy, reading tutoring supports, which are more individualized at the elementary levels, chess programs down there, SEL groups, role-playing are moving forward once the holidays over, as well as a math and literature game activity program at the elementary levels. Yep.
Can you tell me what SEL stands for?
Yep, social-emotional learning.
Okay, thank you.
So, really, the idea there, Rhonda, was to create groups and enrichment activities that are based on student interest. And the whole point is kids being together, kids interacting, having positive pro-social behavior within a topic that they like with a caring, supportive adult. So, it's okay that it's something fun or something non-academic, because there are so many more things, like social pragmatic language, all of those skills that kids really struggled with and have struggled with, we wanted to create the environment. And we opened this up that it could be within areas of teachers' passion. So, if you are a banjo player, as the good doctor is, that might be something that we could offer after school for kids who might be interested. But to get people together with common interests and have positive, supported, supervised activities has kind of been the whole concept behind this.
Yep, yep. We've had kids come to us expressing interest in something they're interested in, and knowing your students and knowing kids who need a little extra something, building programs around some of that student interest. We've also, for example, with the chess piece, almost kind of seeking out certain kids who we know aren't really connected to anything, maybe don't have a whole lot of friends on the sidelines, and connecting them with those programs, and then helping facilitate some of those discussions, taking turns, engaging in a discussion with somebody you don't know. I mean, chess is a very non-threatening environment to socially interact with other kids, and then there's a lot of social coaching on the side. I'm a horrible chess player, but I'm at all these because I think it's important for kids. But we also know the kids who are in there, so we're connecting them with other kids, and it's been good. If we can grow that, that'd be a very, very good thing. We have some science programs going on at the middle school. It's, I throw it under the acceleration piece, because they're solving problems 10 years down the road and coming up. Again, a lot of collaboration, a lot of student sharing of ideas. And again, a lot of the kids that have signed on to that program are kids who might not be connected with sports or athletics. So, again, having the right person at the wheel with that program to kind of steer and engage and encourage, you know, all those SEL pieces, the executive functioning pieces, and kids connecting, and to some degree, you know, bringing smaller communities within the school with some of these activities. And that's been a big piece of this, is building community and bridging some of these kids to be connected to other kids, knowing that the past couple of years has been less than that. So, also, there's homework dens, there's math tutoring supports, you'll see on there. We have some homework programs, that are at capacity, I mean, 15 kids, and we have teachers who are, I'm in for the long haul, this is what I do. And when I go to that teacher and I say, "You can't take on any more water." I'm not giving up on, this is my group. So, at the middle school level, we have additional person who's a seventh-grade teacher, who's awesome, who connects with kids, simply so that we can support the other teachers who don't want to lose their kids, and they don't want to start sharing them with other adults. So, I think that stuff speaks volumes when you look at the teachers who are overseeing some of these pieces and connecting with these kids. They're their kids, and they don't want to, they don't want to lose them. So, we create a little more capacity to ensure that they keep their kids, and we can take on more kids as they join, and we have the hours to do it. Question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
The homework.
Yep.
Is that daily support?
Three times a week at the middle school.
Okay, because I went to the next page, right next to it, which says, "Once a week, twice a week." I mean, that's not homework, hell.
So, some of that's going to be math? Which one are you looking at?
Well, my specific, two things I was concerned about is how much homework support, how often?
Yep.
And two, assuming this is an after-school thing? That's why the time sheets?
Yep.
And I personally am concerned about student behavior, the social-emotional part of this, and what we're doing toward, that's been something I've been speaking about here for a couple of years now.
Yep.
I'm a retired teacher, and we got a lot of workshops and stuff on that, the needs of our children.
So, I can speak on the homework pieces at the middle school.
Okay, go ahead.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays. For fifth and sixth grade homework dens, seventh and eighth grade, we have same days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays. And we also have grade-level math tutoring. We have a fifth grade, one-day fifth grade, two days are for sixth grade. It's the same teacher that does fifth and sixth grade, so trying to be cognizant of that as well. We have a seventh-grade teacher who does it two days a week, and we did facilitate the participation of another staff member who's certified in math to do one day in eighth grade. He fulfills other jobs in his district, so he's stepping back, but we were able to get somebody else within the building, and we inherited another day out of that, starting after the holiday for eighth grade. And at the high school level, we have homework dens in the morning and in the afternoon.
And do we have, as a district, I think this is the position I had asked for follow-up as time goes on, so, do we have measurable ways of determining how successful or the impact we have this program's having?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we regularly check grades, how they're doing. Middle school, we did quite a bit of that, high school as well, just to kind of make sure the efficacy of it. I'll talk about some of the data points, because I think that's important, because it kind of shows who's going and how often, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Middle school, fifth and sixth grade homework dens, about 53% at this point are IEP students, about 6% are 504, and the rest are 41% are regular ed students. That's a big jump from elementary to middle school, especially considering some of these kids, you know, for their last remaining middle, elementary school years, you know, the jump to middle school can be significant. So, that number's a little higher. Seventh and eighth grade, about 53% are regular ed, and the breakdown's there. For the tutoring, you'll see 78% regular ed right now for math tutoring, 80% regular ed for seventh-grade tutoring, and for grade eight, 64% regular ed. The grant really looks at the, those students who really don't have a 504 and IEP, but it's not excluding any, you know, it's for everybody, but it's really intended for those kids following through the cracks, knowing that they might not have the supports there. So, I think those numbers are pretty favorable, and they align with the grants suggesting us to do. Some information on Explorer Vision, video production, things like that. Again, we've kind of really looked at knowing the middle school students and knowing the kids who are struggling along the way, and trying to pair them up with some of the activities. Video production's a perfect example. Got a teacher who's really into that, there's some equipment, and he wants to get up and running, and the kids were doing all kinds of great things, and they're kind of interacting with each other, and it's been very, very promising for them. And some of those kids do have some behavior challenges, so it's provided a positive outlook for them, different populations of students to engage with, and it's something positive, and something within their interest level. The science thing, I talked about, the Explorer Vision. High school, morning and afternoon homework dens. High school has this snappy way of having kids sign on, and then it kind of logs their attendance and this and that. We started kind of jumping into that end of October, but we run regular numbers on that. Forty-nine different students are going to the after-school programs, and 69% of them are regular education. It's a lot of the same kids going all the time, which I think speaks volumes. These kids know it's there, they're engaging, they're accessing, and they're benefiting from it. Do I think there's other kids who should be going? Absolutely. And I think that's the bigger piece, is that we need to keep leaning and finding who these kids are and connecting them. It's not always cut and dry. I mean, we got kids that sometimes, you know, the transportation piece, sometimes the attendance gets in the way, sometimes the mental health gets in the way, but I think for us, we just keep chipping away, trying to, you know, minimize the impacts and get them connected with the them connected with the right people in the program. So that's something we keep pushing in our end. I did talk about the SAT prep, assessment and literacy piece. We kind of rebranded a little, we're using SAT prep as kind of like the model to provide some coaching and some support around. We have two people, Peter Galamaga and Kelsey Chardine, who are going to be overseeing and facilitating that in the January, but we're kind of going to paint it a little broader form, using SAT as a model, but really looking at, anybody's, you know, taken a college admissions exam, I for one was not a good test taker. Simply put, I just didn't think, and I couldn't think like the test takers wanted me to think. We have a lot of students who, probably even more so now, who are just very literal thinkers in that abstract reasoning piece and breaking down a question and understanding that, it's a challenge. So we're pushing that forward at the start of the year, we're starting to sell that at this point, but we think that's going to be promising, and we think it's really going to be something, kind of some of our higher-end kids who are looking at that, that's where we're pushing that. V-Lax is a whole nother piece we oversee. I oversee a lot of V-Lax students who are still connected to GHS, but they're taking all their courses through V-Lax, some are taking additional courses here through Gap. These are kids for one reason or another, have just made the choice to, you know, this year, just kind of locate some different options. So we're just trying to keep them connected in the game and connected to Goffstown community and support them in a remote environment, which, you know, it's a little different than the face-to-face up for all these reasons. And the last piece, we have a research arm, for those of you who are familiar with the high school, middle school as well, we have a publication which goes out called the Marshall Memo. Kim Marshall, he's a local New Hampshire guy, Suresk guy at one time, puts a lot of strands of information and research together and shares with educators, knowing that educators are probably more busy than not, and they don't read research on the weekends, just to kind of fancy themselves. When we kind of start kicking around the idea, we're, you know, we know that elementary teachers sometimes are, you know, probably, you know, some of the first in the buildings and some of the last to leave, and there's really nothing intended for them. So there's a core group of us, we put out monthly installments. Christine Lamson, who's one of our tech integrators, has put together a SharePoint site, and we share that at the middle and the elementary level, really to kind of push out research, current research, job-embedded research, research that we think is timely and purposeful for the current state of the state, focusing a lot on the SEL and getting kids grounded and building connections and rapport with teachers. We do collect the analytical data on that, the hits. It kind of waivers, the hits were quite heavy until Thanksgiving, and then I think everybody went in holiday mode, but, you know, we keep putting out messaging and sending. We have had some good feedback that, you know, teachers, a lot of our parent educators are looking at it and trying to align it with their own credentialing, which we think is positive, and maybe that's something to push in, you know, moving forward. I will say, it's a lot of work on the backend to find the research, to extract what's, you know, important and what's not important, and then ship that out to the masses.
This would fall under another example of an idea that then someone like Mike and the team actualize and make happen. So the idea of pushing out kind of condensed research to teachers that they could then read more, if it's a topic that they're interested, but it's already been filtered for them, was the original idea behind this, but, you know, Mike and the team have all made this happen. They spent a lot of time doing all this work. But again, teachers are too busy to have the time to pour through journal articles and research articles, and this does it for them, and it's kind of a self-selected group, and that was really the intent.
I mean, if I had my wish, I mean, I think just, you know, continuing to push to find people who are interested, there are hours to utilize to help provide stipends for these people who want to carry on these things, and I think, you know, we just keep pushing in our end to connect kids with some of these people. I'm a, you know, a big proponent of, "Kids like you, they'll work for you." You know, when I look at the 38 timesheets that I complete and share with Heather, and we scratch our heads just making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, you know, I look at the names on there, and I'm like, you know, those are people that connect with kids. And I think if we can get a couple more teachers and still keep pushing, pushing the limits of trying to get kids connected, I think we'll be in a good place. But hats off to the people who are overseeing things, they deserve all the credit really, and they're doing a remarkable job, and I think our kids are grateful. Do I think, you know, we can get more bang for the buck? I do, but I can also sit back and say, "What if we weren't doing this? What would be happening to these 200 kids right now in our district?" You know, academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally.
This is kind of a high-level overview of the work that Mike has been doing, but in addition, Mike is spending a lot of time at our alt-ed program, he's been supporting there, he's been kind of a fill-in administrator when people have been out, or I needed coverage, or buildings needed coverage, Mike has been kind of a utility player who has plugged a lot of gaps. So again, I would thank the board for your support of the vision of this program, and I think in the beginning, you know, we were, we had an idea of what we wanted to do, but we knew that it would kind of morph and change over time, and Mike's been flexible and done a great job.
Alan had a question, go ahead.
Does the program take volunteers or people to help out on this program? If people are qualified to do, you know, whatever they need to be doing?
If that was somebody who had a particular interest in that, they could certainly reach out to Mike, and we could, you know, kind of think about how somebody might plug in. You know, we're paying our staff to do these things, and we've opened this up pretty widely to students and staff. So, you know, I recognize that, you know, people who have capacity and have a little more gas in the tank, let's let them run, but I recognize that not everybody has that, and not everybody is at a point where they can take on after-school activities or, you know, take on tutoring or anything like that. But the ones who can, you know, we want to keep making these opportunities for kids, and I would, infomercial, I would offer that, you know, these programs are free, they're available to all parents, we've widely publicized that, and, you know, again, families only have so much capacity, kids only have so much capacity, but we're trying to do the best we can and, you know, keep helping as many kids as we can.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Just because these are after-school programs, are most of the students picked up by a bus or picked up by the parents? I guess that would be one of the things that I have, is are some parents maybe treating this as an after-school study session for their kids, so they can continue their work?
Yep. So at the middle school level, there's a late bus, so we geared a lot of the programs to start at like 3:20 and to 4:20. We have access to a library for kids who want to stay over, but that was one of the things we built in our all-permission forms, check your box if you will pick up your kid at 4:20, or your kid will go to the library. What we didn't want to have happen was we have a teacher who works all day, and then out of the kindness of their heart stays after-school, works with 15 kids, and then they're keeping an eye on these kids till 5 o'clock because, you know, Uncle Fred and, you know, Barbara didn't come pick up, you know, the twins. You know, it's not fair to the teacher, so we tried to really kind of create that. But we do have, you know, access to the late bus at the middle school, which has been a benefit.
In high school.
In high school, and so it's opened up those opportunities. I think high school, a lot of your kids are already driving, but in the elementary school, you know, it's a, a lot of those are in the morning, believe it or not, before school. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
But yeah, transportation sometimes has been kind of a struggle, and, you know, we try to tease the conversation a little more just to ensure, is it a transportation thing? Can we be creative in helping a kid who would really benefit from it? We don't want that to be a game changer and prevent them from doing it, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Shane, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't, but.
But you have a question?
I will, more of a comment, really. I just want to say, I really appreciate that you're bringing a lot of the SEL stuff as far as trying to connect students to their likes and the things they like to do with other students, because I know there's a lot of academic pressure coming out, coming, well, we're still in the pandemic, but, you know, coming out from rural learning and all that. But having kids just be part of communities are a huge thing, so I think that's great that you're putting such an emphasis on that.
And I would say on top of that, too, I mean, the abstract piece and pushing kind of like the deeper level of thinking, it's embedded in all these programs, you know, so, you know, you can look at it as enrichment, or they're doing science activities, but it's a lot more than doing science activities, you know. You're working as a group, you're problem-solving, you're thinking ahead, you're planning, you're doing all those pieces, you know, you're learning to have healthy conflicts with other people, and there's somebody there to coach that, which, you know, it's a hard thing to teach. I mean, kids don't innately get that, you know, you got to learn and develop and nurture that. And I think these opportunities, you know, and in addition to just, you know, having an isolated, we're doing this, it's more global in that. And I think that comes back to the people that we have at the table leading the programs. Those people are natural leaders in kind of helping craft that more holistic kind of instructional perspective anyways, you know, within the classroom, so.
If there were any questions about kind of the logistics of how the grants are being managed, all of that piece, that's really the bulk of what Heather's doing in the business office, so Heather would be happy to answer any questions. But again, in addition to the great work that the teachers are doing and Mike is doing, I would again recognize Heather for, you know, these grants are a lot of work and paperwork and regulation and timelines and deadlines and reporting and on and on and on, and, you know, the business office has done a great job, and Heather in particular.
Thank you. Any other questions for either Mike or Heather? No? Well, thank you very much for giving us an update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for being here, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Nice meeting you. All right, so we're going to move on to approving December 6th school board meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to read them? Anybody see anything?
I'll move to approve.
All right, Alan makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. Any further discussion before I do roll call? All right, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed. All right, committee report, Scott.
Hi, everyone. Tonight, you have a manifest in front of you, and it totals $2,262,098.71. Your payroll taxes and benefits are a little over $1.9 million. This particular manifest, you had both your Health Trust, Health Trust insurance premiums as well as your New Hampshire retirement, as well as payroll. For your special ed activities, those total almost $83,000. Most notable there, Durham School Services, which is your sped transportation in district for October, as well as you have a variety of out-of-district charges that we Bedford School District, as well as the Lighthouse School. And then we also have different vendors like Core Vocational, Johnson ABA Consulting, and Suresk, who are doing contracted services for us. And most of the invoices, one of the peculiar ones, some of them are very late in their billing, so you see like summer of 2021, just is what it is, some of them are just behind in their billing. And your regular expenses, you'll see that we did replace the pickup truck, and the amount was $44,554, which was a great, great price, and Randy took delivery of that last week, and it's in back of the high school. So I want to thank the board for that, and I know Randy was super appreciative of how quick the board was able to respond, because, like I said, I think you recognize to get an F-250 with a plow for that price was just crazy price. Are there some other noteworthy ones? Budget document for those board members, we used to budget, we used to bill, we used to bill monthly, now they bill quarterly, so that's why, that copier service contract, it's a quarterly bill for all of the copiers in the district. Naltz Plumbing, that one is also, not only do we have miscellaneous plumbing repairs, but we had to do grease-trapped cleanhouse at all of our kitchens, and that accounted for well over half of that amount. CDW Government LLC, we replaced routers, switches, and other networking hardware. Amazon, I always like to hit on this one because we do do a lot through Amazon. Of that, $9,996.73, $2,000 roughly was for physical ed supplies and equipment, and there was just other supplies and equipment that was purchased there. And a couple of other noteworthy ones, Granite YMCA. In case you didn't know, we do rent a pool from them for the entire swim season for practices and competitions, a little over $6,300. And then lastly, Gov Connection. It was about, 3,000 of that was for Zoom licenses, and then the rest were other licenses. Want to let the board know that we did switch over to Microsoft Teams, which is something that we're already, we have already been paying for, but we did keep a modest amount of Zoom licenses for each school, just in case, because as we migrated over. But so far, you know, we've been using Teams. Food service-wise, you'll see another large bill or invoice from Performance Food Service, a little over $22,000. And again, Megan is just doing a great job, you know, kind of keeping track of that. I don't want to digress too much, but like anything else, we've been having supply chain challenges, and she's had to buy food like at least a month in advance so that we would, she'd be able to have a variety of a menu. So that's why you're seeing these big amounts, because she's buying a lot at a time. And that's it for my summary. Are there any specific questions?
All right, no questions? All right, so we'll need a motion to pass the manifest.
Move to accept manifest, the amount of $2,262,098.71.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? By Ginny. Any further discussion before I do roll call? Okay, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed. Okay, Scott.
So every few months, I just, I provide, although the board gets these expenditure and revenue reports every month, I do want to just kind of let you know the lay of the land with regard to how we're tracking our expenditures and our revenues, and this particular, right now, we're tracking very similar to last year with respect to our expenditures. So we're seeing an underspend in our, say, our teacher and parent lines, simply because of staff that we were not able to fill. Once we get, which will be next month, I'll give you a report on that Health Trust, the refund there, but we'll be underspent there, we're going to be under, we've encumbered the transportation budget, but I'm going to release some of those encumbrances because we're not going to be, we don't have 22 buses running, we're more like 17 or 18, so I'm going to, I'm going to release some of the encumbrances there to give us a clearer picture. We have seen movement, I know I'm speaking with Jennifer Dahloff, who's our special ed director, in terms of pairs, we are trying to hire pairs, but it's, the fact is you have to, you know, you might want to, but you don't always get the pairs. So we'll be able to fill some of those. I know that when we did the budget, you, the board was asking me about electricity, Jared, remember the budget committee asked me about that. They were probably right, but we'll monitor that. Our electrical, our electricity costs are a little bit more than they were last year, but with everything going on, we'll absorb it, so I'm not, I'm not too worried about that. So we're trending fairly well. Once I get that Health Trust all squared away, which will be the first week of January, we issue refunds to all of our employees who pay for those premiums. And then obviously with the district expense, I'm going to let you know what that is, and probably January, February, I want to have discussions with the board about what do you want to do with that. So the pickup truck was one of those things, but there might be some other smaller projects that you might want to address. Ultimately, what I look for is what do I think our end-of-year fund balance is going to look like, and will we hit those targets? But this is going to be another one of these years where we have to be, you know, discognizant of the fact that we could have under expend of the budget and by a certain percentage, so I'll keep you posted there. On the revenue side, the vast majority of our revenues come from the state and/or local taxpayer. There are a couple of areas where we're not seeing our revenue meet expectations. One is Medicaid reimbursement. Brian's well aware of this, as is Jennifer Dahloff, is that it is an incredible amount of red tape for us to get Medicaid reimbursement, and we're falling substantially short there. I, I underdid it this year because I wasn't sure where we were gonna, where we were gonna fall.
Right.
Whether we were gonna have role models, et cetera, so. And what was your other question?
At the very bottom of that page.
Yep.
What is this charter school aid? What is that about?
We get money from the state, a reimbursement of, for, for kids who are in charter schools because we still have to provide special education services to those kids. So we have, I don't know the number, it's probably.
So our children who go to a different school?
Yeah, we have Goffstown residents, their, their kids go to charter schools, but we're still responsible for the special ed pieces of that.
Okay. Is this part of that state thing?
Yes.
Okay.
You all set, Ellen?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Scott? All right. C and none. Are you all set for now, Scott?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, budget committee, Jared?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next budget committee meeting will be on January 4th, 7:00 p.m. right here. A little bit later in our agenda, we'll be talking about the GEA contract. If that is ratified and moved forward, we will be presenting that to the budget committee on the 4th. So I wanted to let everybody know that. If anybody wants to come and show our support, be greatly appreciated. Speaking about budget committee and as superintendent had listed, the public hearing for all municipal and school budgets for the budget committee will be on January 11th at 7:00 p.m. and that is in the auditorium. So that is when we have the public hearing, really hear from the public on all items and aspects associated with any part of the budget, whether it's school or the municipality. So again, wanted to let people know that as an opportunity to come and voice your independent support as an individual for particular parts of not only the school budget, but the town budgets as well. And the deliberative session, as we saw, is scheduled right now for February 7th. And that is the school side only. The town will have a different deliberative session.
7 o'clock?
With the snow date of the 9th.
Yep.
What time is it? Did we figure out the deliver, is that 7?
I, I didn't write down the time.
Yes.
We have it 7?
I think we talked about 7.
I know we talked about it.
But you could, if you want to change that time, that's your, that's the board's call, but I think we had earmarked 7.
Okay. All right, so 7 it is. Anything else, Jared?
Nope. Just any questions, let me know.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jared? All right, thanks, Jared. PNC, Rheta?
Yep. So PNC hasn't met since the last time and you should have all received the, the draft of the vision, vision statement. It looks like it's not on the agenda tonight, so we'll be looking at that on January 4th at our next meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about when our next meeting is.
Okay. So at our next meeting, we'll go over that and because of that, it probably doesn't make sense for us, the P and, for PNC to meet on that day until we get some feedback, so we'll talk about it then.
All right, thank you, Rheta.
Yep.
Policy, we met this past Monday, which you have a slew of first reads that we'll do later in the agenda. And our next meeting is January 10th at 5:30 at the SAU. C and E, Ginny?
We met and we had a presentation by Lyle Hamel and M.C. Berry. And the first part of it was, they explained the rollout of the IXL program for 2021. And that will be the field test year. And they purchased IXL in the fall with ESAR grants for remediation and acceleration for grades K through 6 and flex students in 7 and 8. The IXL program is designed to support skill development for remediation and acceleration. It integrates all SAU 19 core elementary school programs and it can also stand alone to support skill developments for special students in special education in Title I. And 21, 22 is the implementation, implementation year and all teachers will be trained in the summer of 2021. Teachers in grade 3 through 6 will be up and running in September and October. Teachers in grade 2 begin the end of October. Grade 1 began in November. And there's this new QR code, which they're using for the younger kids. And instead of signing in, they just sign in with their QR codes and the kids are finding it awesome. It's really easy for them to do. And that's been working out really well for kids. Kindergarten has started and will be up and running in January. And the administration has been through initial training on how to access and review school level data. I think it's a really interesting plan because not only does it help with remediation, but it does the acceleration too. And it's specifics student-based, so after the student does the input in it, all of the skill training and either for the remediation or the acceleration is based on their specific needs. So I think it's really helped, going to be helpful for, for kids in Goffstown.
How often are kids allowed to go on the computer and do this?
I'm sorry?
How often are the kids have access to this?
I think it's different for, for, for each classroom and they're just starting, rolling it in now for grades. I'm not sure, Brian, is it a daily thing or?
It depends on the grade level and it depends on the class. There's also some opportunities for families that have kids, want to do more kind of enrichment. They want to do more, they have the ability to do that.
And it self-tracks and the teacher can check on it?
Correct.
Exactly. It all tracks, right. So it's, it's easy for teachers to go in and see how the child is progressing and can, you know, redo the skills and whatever, so. And NIWA was another presentation and all the student, all students in grades 2 through 8 tested in reading, math and language usage in September. The last time the test was administered was in 2019. And why? The New Hampshire DOE required the SAS interim test to be given in the fall of 2020. Data gives us a snapshot in time for one testing metric. The 2021 achievement data will be compared against the 2018 and the 2019 level achievement data results to learn if the data is congruent or not. This comparison will be shared at the 20, January 24th meeting. So you'll be able to understand that better. They really didn't go into much of that. And as far as the student assessment system testing, the DOE iPlatform website has just come out to the public and it was reviewed. We reviewed the SAS school-wide reported achievement data for Mountain View, New Boston, Central School, Maple Avenue, Bartlett. We discussed the New Hampshire state achievement targets, which were developed prior to the pandemic. The committee also reviewed the SAS Excel spreadsheet that further, it just aggravates all SAS data for New Hampshire districts and the state as well. This is a spreadsheet that will allow for more detailed analysis of the data and get into the sub-group levels. And the intent is to work on, they really didn't have any of that pulled out yet for Goffstown. And so they will be doing that from now until January 24th.
The SAS or NWEA?
Pardon me?
The SAS or the NWEA you're talking about?
Both. Because they've just come out and they haven't gone through all the data to, to really see where our kids landed on the scale until they'll be coming then. And there is an, the iPlatform, if you go onto the DOE, there's an iPlatform, specifically iReport, where you can go on and see all the data for the whole state and it's quite, can be quite specific in some points if you wanted to go on and spend any time to see what our district, our schools broken down and the whole state. But they will come back and do more specific telling us how our kids did. And we will be meeting again, 110, at 7:00 p.m. at the SAU.
Thank you, Ginny. Anybody have any questions for Ginny?
Go ahead, Rheta. Just a follow-up. I think we spent a lot of time on the IXL, talking about it. And one of the things that I think was really impressive is how excited the kids were to doing the work. They, so it wasn't like, oh, I gotta go on the computer. They're very excited because there were rewards and badges. And I also saw your face with a QR code because I first thought, what are we stamping your arms? And they just wave in front of, but they all.
We are not stamping anyone's arms. No arm stamping going on in Goffstown.
Anyways, it's, they have a little index card with a QR code, which is a great skill to have. Parents will learn something, so they just wave it in front of the computer and it recognizes.
Wow. That's awesome.
And really, the, the IXL program, I feel like I'm still learning about it, but the appreciation goes to Mrs. Berry. This has been the initiative that she has pushed, she researched, she set up the training. So she's really done all the work along with her team of wonderful teacher leaders, so.
This is a program that the kids can actually see their success.
Exactly.
Does it have the charts and everything that shows how well they're succeeding or what they need to read? That, that visual for kids is so motivating.
And, and the cool thing is they get badges and they get these little rewards, so they want to work harder to.
And work.
Get these little things, so it is, it's motivating. And it's interesting for them.
Yep.
The things that they're doing are interesting, so.
Amanda?
As a parent of a six-year-old who was using this in New Boston last year, he loves it. Like, it's always like, oh, can we get on the computer and do that? Because even if you get it wrong, when it's a system, it'll have these bouncing balls and like, it's not, it's very motivating and, oh, we're in the challenge zone, let's go. And then also just in terms of, like, I can self choose what he should be working on, but oftentimes the, the teacher can select certain skills and then you can go to, teacher recommends and go into those skills. So it's, it's really fabulous.
Thank you. That's, that's great. Anybody else? You're all set? I'm all set, too. Thank you, Ginny. And Rheta? All right, facilities planning committee, Jared?
I believe we have a meeting that is tentatively scheduled for January 18th. Just want to confirm.
I was waiting on you, so, January 18th?
I sent you that message about a week ago, but.
Okay.
We're looking at that day, which is the day before you can open up for school board rep for signups.
Oh, okay.
It was on the 19th, but we're looking on the 18th. And so everybody's welcome to come. We'll be going through the demographic study with those members that weren't able to attend and other items that we need to kind of button up.
What time and where?
7 o'clock, right here in this room.
All right, thank you, Jared. All right, superintendent's report?
Thank you. One thing that Mr. Gross and I had been talking about with respect to some of the facilities planning items that Jared is referencing, but in addition to all of the, the projects that we're considering using ESAR funds, Scott and I wanted to float the idea to the board of considering a mid-year retreat where we would do some strategic planning, look at some of the CIP items, we're gonna need to make some decisions. I think that this is kind of in concert with the facilities planning, but I think the board should have some conversations. We could think about which one should go first, but Scott and I had, had thought about considering that the board might want to have a dedicated meeting in time just for this singular topic. I think we could also look at the mission and vision maybe as part of that because that's kind of in that same vein of long-term planning, strategic planning, but that was something that Mr. Gross and I had wanted to mention. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday, the first Monday after vacation, and I wanted to propose to the board that at this point, we don't have any agenda items. It would be basically the first day back from vacation and we wanted to, at this point, propose not holding that meeting. We don't really see a need. If there were any pressing issues that came up or financial information that needed to be processed, we might change our mind, but at this point, we really don't have any agenda items. So I wanted to float that for the chair's consideration. I wanted to let you know that the state board has approved the area agreement. That went to them at their December meeting, I think it was December 10th, as part of their consent agenda, so that's good news. And, you know, so at this point, we, all we need to do is go forward and have an explanation at deliberative sessions and then this will move on to the warrant in March. And hopefully we'll have another 10-year agreement to look forward to. We hold a, another vaccine clinic this Wednesday. We have the second dose of our 5 to 11s, which we have about 135 to 11s signed up. And that same day, we offered a booster clinic for 16, 17 and 18-year-old students. We also opened that up to any staff members who haven't yet received their booster who want to, as well as their own kids, any staff members' kids who are 16, 17 or 18-year-olds to try to make it easy for our staff. And we also allowed staff to have plus-ones. So we've got about 300 people for the 16-plus and 130, so we'll have 430 people that we will process on Wednesday night. It will be a long, tiring night for all of us. We again send our appreciation to our wonderful nurses who are going to be there giving the shots. The 5 to 11s are being done by the public health department, but all 300 of the 16-plus are being done by our nurses. And I do want to let parents know that when there is approval for the 12, the 12-plus boosters, that we will plan on doing that as well. And again, this is to make it easier for families that choose to get the vaccine. So the state of the state of COVID, I think everyone is acutely aware of what the numbers look like. 1,250 over the last 14 days. Hillsborough County is a little bit lower than that. Test positivity rating today was 12.9%, so 13% is very high. There are currently 221 current school clusters and 55 current outbreaks, one of them being New Boston Central School, which was identified as an outbreak at the end of last week. The numbers in Goffstown have gone down. We were over 100 a couple of weeks ago. It's, the number today is 71. New Boston continues to tick upward a little bit, they're at 38. So if you figure a community with 5,700 people, they have a little less than half of what Goffstown has who has almost, you know, over 18,000 residents. So New Boston cases are high, even though their vaccination rate is higher than Goffstown's. Hospitalizations, I think everyone's aware, are very concerning and we in our SAU had 386 cases so far this year. And I, I think at this point, with the circumstances being what they are, if the board had wanted to consider any additional mitigation, anything else for us to consider, we could certainly do that, but at this point. So the state of the state of COVID, I think everyone is acutely aware of what the numbers look like. 1,250 over the last 14 days. Hillsborough County is a little bit lower than that. Test positivity rating today was 12.9%, so 13% is very high. There are currently 221 current school clusters and 55 current outbreaks. One of them being New Boston Central School, which was identified as an outbreak at the end of last week. The numbers in Goffstown have gone down. We were over 100 a couple of weeks ago. It's, the number today is 71. New Boston continues to tick upward a little bit. They're at 38. So if you figure a community with 5,700 people, they have a little less than half of what Goffstown has, who has almost, you know, over 18,000 residents. So New Boston cases are high, even though their vaccination rate is higher than Goffstown's. Hospitalizations, I think everyone's aware, are very concerning. And we in our SAU had 386 cases so far this year. And I, I think at this point, with the circumstances being what they are, if the Board had wanted to consider any additional mitigation, anything else for us to consider, we could certainly do that, but at this point, we're, we're just continuing on. We're continuing to do what we're doing every day. If and when we have cases, targeted masking is occurring. When we've had outbreaks, the whole school has been masked for a short period of time. But, you know, at this point, we're trying to have as much normalcy for our kids as we can and recognizing that everyone is, you know, dealing with this pandemic that just continues in their own way. So our teachers have done an incredible job. I'm so grateful and so appreciative of all of our staff that we have, you know, just really continued to do a good job. And if you hadn't heard, I also want to let the Board know that this past Friday, there was a, a number of threats that were made nationally as well as in New Hampshire. Some of the information that schools received, we had the opportunity to review and discuss with our police chiefs and law enforcement. We did not deem any of the information to be credible, as the state had done. But a number of schools, some schools closed, some schools did evacuations and sent kids home. We did none of those things. It was very business as usual. I'd like to thank Chief Serino, who had an increased police presence. But again, we, we live in a world where it's easy to make threats and it can be very unsettling to teachers, to parents, to children, to kids. And we recognize that. It's a, it's a hard, you know, kind of complicated time to be a kid. And it's unfortunate that with everything that this generation is dealing with, to have these kinds of things on top of it is just so disheartening. But anyhow, there were, there were no credible threats that we ascertained. And there were a number of schools that were kind of called out. And depending on what GHS stands for, we were one of them. So again, it, it could have been Guilford High School, it could have been Gilmington High School, it could have been something else. But, you know, we took that seriously. We reviewed it. We have processes and protocols in place through our emergency operations plan, and we carried on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brian. So before we move on, we should just talk about the school board meeting for January 3rd.
Please.
Is what we have scheduled. But the next one after that is January 24th. So what is everybody's senses on no meeting January 3rd unless something comes up and we let you know? And then we just meet January 24th?
I'm fine with that unless something comes up.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just, just thinking through the, the duties that we have.
Yep.
At the meeting of the 24th, we'll have to have a vote for the actual budget that's being either to approve or not to approve. Because the Budget Committee is going through, they'll have their public hearing on the 11th. They will make their vote to recommend, not recommend, then it comes back to us to look at, and that will go to deliberative session. So just making sure that we maintain that meeting and have it on the agenda, we should be fine.
Yeah, yeah, there was no talk of the 24th being taken off.
I, I don't want that meeting to be astronomically big either.
Right, which, yes, that was a concern, we're trying to figure out another day.
Yeah.
Because the 17th, the week before, we're off. The 10th, we have subcommittee scheduled. So is, so is everybody good for the 3rd? No meeting unless, go ahead.
This is probably pretty low on the totem pole, but we are, I don't know when we need to get our picture in for the town report, what the deadline is for that.
The 30th.
So we have to do it the 24th?
Yeah, because I got an email today from Danielle Basoro. And, hold on, I'll let you know. She, I could have sworn she said that annual report, Friday, January 28th is the deadline.
The 28th, okay.
Yeah.
We got a cardboard cutout of Dan to put in?
We need one. We do, we need one.
We're meeting on the 17th or the 20?
24th. The 17th is not scheduled. That's a day off from school. It's Martin Luther.
The public hearings on the 24th?
No, the public hearing-
The public hearings on January 11th.
The 11th, right. And the 18th is the facilities meeting.
Okay, so the school board's meeting on the 24th?
Yes. Okay, so if anything changes, we'll email you.
And Heather?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
You know, the 10th, was the 10th not an option if we really wanted to get together twice in January?
The 10th was getting filled up by subcommittees, I think that's why.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that too.
Oh, that's a no-skill day.
Is there anything else for Brian? Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Are you going to send out a notice to cancel the 3rd?
So we would just, if we make that decision, we would just not post it.
Right.
Do you need a motion or just the consensus?
I think consensus is fine.
Okay. Are you good, Dan?
Yes, I am, thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan. Go ahead, Rhett.
I just wanted to go back to Brian on the, you know, the whole situation with COVID. And you said unless the Board wants to change what's happening. And I just wanted to ask again, because from, aside from the clusters which are being dealt with, there's really nothing happening in the, in the schools that, I, I've got a question mark at the end.
What would those things be?
Well, not necessarily what would they be, but it seems like we're not seeing the, the, you know, the, the passing of COVID happening in the schools. So what are the things that would make us want to change what we're doing right now?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point. I would say unknowns are what is the impact of this new variant? What is the transmissibility of this new variant? I, I think we're not really sure at this point what that is. We certainly would have the ability to mask all kids, adopt a universal masking policy if that was the Board's position. We could require more distancing. At this point, we are not strictly enforcing keeping kids away from each other like we did last year. We're allowing all athletics, all performing arts, all of those kinds of things. We're not cohorting to the extent. So those are some of the things that we could consider. New Boston, the New Boston School Board just decided to go mask optional for parents and to do targeted masking beginning January 10th. So that's a shift for that Board. But, you know, at, at this point, we'll, I think we'll have to just be mindful of what's happening and, and look at the numbers. But we continue to see household contacts are the primary focus of why we're seeing kids with COVID. We're seeing positive parents, positive students, the whole household is positive. Over and over, that is the trend that we have seen. I think it's impossible for me to say that there is no possibility of school-based transmission. I think there is. But I think that the, we're not seeing the evidence of that. The ventilation, as you're sitting here and you can listen to the ventilation running, all of our schools have mechanical ventilation that is essentially on full blast. All of the classroom air exchange is, is happening multiple times every hour. And I think that's one of the most significant factors, is the ventilation in a school is very different than people's homes. It's different than bars, restaurants, other places that people are congregating. You know, but I think, I think we don't know a lot about this new variant, but there's going to be another variant. And then there's going to be another variant, and there's going to be another variant. So we're, I'm kind of at the point where, you know, we're, we're learning to live with this. And we want to try to keep as much normalcy as we kid, as we can for kids.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Brian? All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So into old business, draft warrant review. Scott, is that you?
Yeah. So you should have in front of you the 2022 draft warrant. And you'll notice that Denise and I, we placed the warrant language into what's called the Department of Revenue Portal. So before, you saw it in a Microsoft Word version. Now it's loaded in. I, I sent it for what's called a pre-review by the DRA. They completed that. So Article 1, that's your election of officers. There are three members of the school board. That'll be for three years. Operate, Article number two is your operating budget. And as we've discussed over the last month or so, your proposed budget and your default. And as Jared mentioned earlier, the, the public hearing will take place by the Budget Committee. They, they then tend, they would then vote as to their recommendation that evening. And then you would then, on the 24th, do, put your recommendation on it. You'll be talking about the collective bargaining agreement for the teachers this evening. And those, it's a four-year proposed contract, and those are the amounts. There was some offset from the special revenue or the grants fund. Once again, same story. Budget Committee will review and put, place their recommendations. The renewal of the area agreement, that, as you know, is a 10-year renewal. And as the Superintendent mentioned earlier, the State Board gave their blessing to it. And again, the Board just needs to vote on that. Your capital reserve fund deposit, I think it was a couple of weeks meetings ago, was noted, that'll be $200,000. And then the last one, Article 6, is the contingency fund for, that, that you, again, you also discussed. Ironically, the New Boston School District has the exact same warrant articles. Their CRF deposit's a little bit less, but everything else is essentially the same, both in number and everything, in terms of the warrant articles. So made a little easier for me when they were all the same. So the 24th would be the day where the school board would need to put, need to vote to recommend or not recommend. And then I then go into the portal one more time and click that, and then we're ready to go.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott? All right, so the 24th. Okay, thank you, Scott. All right, so this goes on to our second reads. We did first reads, we did questions. So now, if everybody's happy with everything, we can go one by one to move them forward.
I got two sets of, which one am I looking at?
You have first reads, which are later. The second read should have been right under with Policy BCA, JI, JIA, and JICK. Those are second reads. All right, so we'll start with the first policy, BCA. And BCA dash R. Dan, did you?
I was going to make a motion if there's not going to be any-
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion that we adopt BCA, which actually incorporates many of the provisions of BCA-R, because BCA-R is now removed.
Correct.
As presented in, I'll stop there.
All right.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dan. I have a second by Ellen. Do I, any questions before I do roll call? All right, see you in none. Rhett?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So the next one is Policy JI. Anybody want to? So JI combines Policy JIA.
I'll move to approve.
Policy JI.
And remove, yeah, and the combining JI and JIA, so-
Okay.
The JI as presented.
Correct. All right, thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Shane. Any further questions, discussion? All right, see you in none. Rhett?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Last one is JICK and JICKR. This is just-
Just an, updated that it's been reviewed.
Yeah.
A move that we accepted as presented.
All right, so by Ellen, do I have a second?
Inquiry?
Yes.
When she moved it, did she move both the JIC and JICR?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And are we putting the cause of the date on here?
Yes, we should. Did you get that, Ellen? You're good? You get that, Denise?
I did.
Okay. And then Ginny, did you second that? All right. Any further question, comments, before I do roll call? Okay, Rhett?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. All right, so that's it for second reads. Thank you. And now we have new business, Goffstown Consolidated Communications Grant.
So we are pleased to inform the Board that Goffstown High School and specifically the Team 501 Power Nights Robotics Program has received a grant of $2,500. And we would extend our appreciation to Consolidated Communications. And we would ask for the Board to make a move, a motion to accept the $2,500 grant.
All right.
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. Any questions, discussion, before I do roll call?
Any questions?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Is there anything in here other than just saying, here's the money, let's use it for the Team 501 Power Nights, and away we go? Any recording conditions or anything else associated with this?
Negative.
Perfect.
Are you all good, Dan?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, I'm going to do roll call. Rhett?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Thank you for that. All right, now we have ESSAR reopening plan, six-month renewal.
So I think Scott and I will probably do this one together. This is something that you will see over and over again for the next several years. We have to, every six months, have an agenda item where we have discussed the reopening plan. Again, this is a, a plan that is required from federal money that we received. Reopening is a, a bit of an inaccurate statement because we haven't been closed except for when the governor shut schools down in New Hampshire. But be that as it may, we have to have it in the minutes that we have reviewed this, that we've discussed if there are any changes that need to be made. At this point, we are not recommending any changes. And we would continue on with the plan that we've already submitted to the Department of Ed. Mr. Gross, would you add anything to that?
No, I think you hit on all the points. It's, it's an every-six-month process until all the ESSAR grants are completed.
And do we need to move on it? Motion to, to accept the plan each time?
I, I think that it should be, be reflected in the minutes that, that the Board reviewed, you know, stated that there was no need for any modifications.
I, I think that's sufficient. I don't think there's any-
Yeah, no need for motion.
Requirement for you to take a motion and have that, but I, I think just a review is sufficient.
Anybody have questions on this? So nothing has changed from six months ago when we went through this? Is everybody good with this plan to move on? All right, so you have it in the minutes, Denise, that we reviewed it. All right, thank you. So six months, we'll do that again?
We'll do it again.
All right, New York City Performing Arts Trip Request, this was sent to you guys in an email.
So what we have here is the Performing Arts Department is looking to do a trip to go to a Broadway show. And it's more than that. It's an opportunity to meet with a former Goffstown student who is a professional working on Broadway, who is going to do kind of a behind-the-scenes tour, I guess, and it sounds like a pretty neat opportunity. Obviously, at this point in time, case, COVID cases are high, but this would be all, you know, people's choice. We're looking at March 18th and 19th and approximately 40 students going. And the cost is roughly $350, depending on room choice assignments. So if we have some kids that are in singles, doubles, or multiple rooms, it kind of changes the price a little bit. Mrs. McCann has reached out to the tour company to look at kind of refund opportunities. And I think we have a very good plan that at this point, all of the hotels and tickets would be refundable. And the tour company that we would be working with would be working with a transportation company that would allow for refunds if needed. So I think at this point, even though, you know, cases are high, I think that this is a great opportunity for our kids. The, actually, I should share the name. The student, the former student, GHS alumni, GHS Performing Arts student, who also did a summer theater director, is Andy Falou. And he's going to give kind of a, this is part of the Waldorf School- So I'll let that just kind of resonate in and of itself. But this would also include, you know, obviously, a night in New York City, in Times Square, Rockefeller Center, and it would include the Broadway matinee. So it's really a pretty neat opportunity for our kids. I would share with the board that New York City has vaccination and mask requirements to enter any hotels, to enter any shows, to enter any restaurants. So although we are not requiring anyone to be vaccinated, in order to go on this trip to New York City, you would need to meet New York City's requirements. So with that, we would ask the board to approve this out-of-state overnight field trip request.
Anybody have any questions for Brian? Go ahead, Ginny.
No, I'd just like to make the motion to approve the request as written.
Thank you, Ginny. Do I have a second? By Terry. Any further?
I do have a, I do have a comment.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
And my comment is, I think it's a great idea. We've supported this in the past, but we have a city who is making potentially some of our attendees ineligible to go. That's discrimination. I will have to vote no on this.
All right, thank you, Dan. Do I have anything else before I do a roll call? All right, I'm going to, we have a motion, we have a second. So Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
No.
Dan?
No.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
No.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we had four noes? Did you get all that?
Three.
Three noes.
I think.
Three noes. One, two, three. Okay, so the motion did pass. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to board approval is requested, our teacher contracts. So we have this on as non-public, which we could do, but we did talk about this stuff in the contract last time in non-public, so it's completely up to you guys if you're ready to ratify it now, or if you want to go into non-public later to reiterate everything that was discussed before.
Inquiry?
Yes, Dan.
As the, before I recuse myself, I'm just curious if the teachers' union has ratified it?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. I will now recuse myself from voting or participating in discussion.
Thank you, Dan. So what is the, go ahead, Jared.
Just as a question, because the teachers have ratified the contract, do we need to release the contract to the public before we vote on it? I guess, what's the protocol that we need to follow?
So we would, we would release it after the board's ratification vote.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll plan to, obviously, present it deliberative. We'll put, we'll present to the Budget Committee on January 4th. We'll, you know, any information will be available to the public. And I would again state that I appreciate the hard work that the three members of the board who participated in the negotiations, and I would just share that our teaching staff is our greatest resource. These are, this is what makes the mission possible.
Right.
And I'm very grateful and appreciative to Mrs. Grasset and her team, who negotiated with us. We think that this is a very fair deal to everyone involved, and we're very happy to bring this forward.
So is everybody good to move forward now, or do you want to go into non-public later? Do I answer, answer any questions or anything?
I was going to make the motion to ratify.
Okay. Well, if somebody seconds, then.
Okay, I move to ratify.
All right. By Ellen, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Shane, any further discussion before I do roll call? All right, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan? Is abstaining?
Recusing.
Recusing. Sorry, Dan, didn't mean to call on you.
It doesn't get recorded.
Right. Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, you're welcome.
And congratulations to the board. This is an incredibly important thing for our community.
So we shouldn't have a motion to release it now, correct?
It would, now it would, you don't even need to make a motion, but this would be the next step in the process.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so we're all good? All right, so the next is just informational. You have a ton of first reads. We've been very busy. So January, don't look at that January 24th. We will come back with questions, and then we'll do the second read in February, since we're not meeting January 3rd. All right, so moving on, Mountain View Middle School Principal Search Committee.
So what you will find in your packets is a copy of the job description, as well as the recommended process to replace Mrs. Kohler as the principal of Mountain View Middle School. This is the, kind of the big 11-by-14, I guess, would be the size paper. And the green colors indicate dates that the committee would be meeting. But so just a high-level overview of this process is, we would be reaching out and looking for people to volunteer to serve. The very bottom is where you'll see the committee composition that we're recommending. So specifically, we're proposing a committee composed of Mrs. Kohler, Mrs. McGrath, and Mr. Gross, representing the SAU admin. We put board chairs or designees, so it would be up to the chair if you would like to be a part of that or recommend someone else. Three middle school teachers. We'd like to see one regular ed, one special ed, and one unified art. And we have asked, or we will ask, when the board approves this, if the board approves this, for the GEA, the Goffstown Education Association, to identify those members, let them choose their own people to serve. And similarly, one person from the support staff, which we would ask GESS to provide us with that name. Two middle school parents, one from Goffstown, one from New Boston. One elementary administrator, and one high school administrator, as well as the New Boston Central School principal. So that would be a total of 14 people. So what you'll see here would be the posting of the position, the identification of the community, committee members. So we would reach out to ask parents to provide their interest, as well as the associations to provide their people. We would then distribute packets after we receive applicants. We would then finalize interview questions, and then we would be looking to have a meeting to review the candidates and select interviewees, with the first round interviews occurring on January 25th and January 27th. Second round interviews conducted on February 2nd and February 3rd. We would look to do external student, or excuse me, school visitations on the 9th and 10th of February. And then we would host candidates on the 15th of February to come to Mountain View and kind of do meet and greets with teachers and groups of support staff. And we would have a process that we would allow our faculty and staff to provide input on the candidates, as we've done in the past. We would then move on to reference checking. And then we would look to do final interviews with the superintendent on February 21st. And our plan would be to have a nomination that we're recommending on March 7th. We've tried to have kind of an expedited process, because you can likely imagine there are a lot of administrative openings right now. Comparatively, Exeter Cooperative Middle School is kind of one of the other big ones that we've seen go out. We overlap their time period a little bit, but I'd really like to get out before other school districts. So I think timing really is important. And lately, we have seen a lot of administrative positions that are open. There are a lot of superintenencies, there's a lot of principals, BAs, special ed directors, kind of across the gamut. I think a lot of administrators, as well as teachers, have decided that they're at the point where they're either retiring early, or moving on, or whatever their circumstances. So I would like to get out as early as we can. That would also potentially allow us to do some transitioning before the school year would be over. We have often done, we've had kind of an informal agreement with other superintenants where we get the candidate for a few days, and then we would give them back after July 1 to help transition their new person. So we kind of always have that reciprocity with other school districts. But at this point, this is the plan that we'd like to move forward with, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Why only one Goffstown parent?
Because we thought that it was kind of a big pool already, and where the board can make, the number, you could put as many parents as you want on it.
I know, I was, I'm just thinking, we've got, it's a big school, a lot of children and a lot of parents that, you know, grade five through eight, not just seven and eight, that we might want to have a parent from Goffstown for four, five, from five and six, and one from seven and eight, and give us an odd number on the committee.
So we could do three middle school parents, two from Goffstown, and one from New Boston?
That's what I'm suggesting.
And one being five, six, one being seven, eight, if that's, I don't see, I, I think that's fine. I think we just try to manage the size of how many people we're looking at here.
Okay. Anyone else, questions? So I can do this unless someone else wants to do it, and then you can do it. Go ahead, Jared.
I would say, if you don't want to do it, definitely something I'm interested in doing, but if other people want to, based on time commitments, it's up to the chair's discretion.
You said you're interested?
Yes.
Okay.
But if other people are as well.
I'm interested, but I'd be fine if Jared did.
Go ahead, Jared. You can do it.
Yay.
So do we want to make it 15? We'll add one more parent?
Sure.
Is everybody good with that?
So two Goffstown.
Okay, so 15, we'll do two parents from Goffstown, one kind of, we'll shoot for that kind of five, six, one, seven, eight. Sometimes people have multiple kids, and it's not always that clean, but with kind of that construct.
And then Jared's going to be the board for sitting on.
Great.
All right, so do you, you need a motion then?
Yes, please.
All right, so is everybody good with this plan as is? If so?
I just have one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Shane.
Do we, do we know, are we anticipating how many questions we're going to be asking, or how many questions we're presenting to candidates?
We're anticipating somewhere around 712 questions for every candidate. I think we need to be thorough.
I feel like the last interviews we did, we had a lot of questions, that we had to cut a lot out. So I think if we scale back a little bit, might be beneficial.
Yeah, we'll probably have somewhere around 12 to 15 questions. But yeah, I mean, you need to not have an interview that goes on for, you know, an hour and 45 minutes or two hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Anyone else? All right, go ahead, Jared.
I'll make a motion to present, or accept the plan as amended with two Goffstown parents.
Perfect, thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? By Ellen. All right, any other discussion before I do roll call? All right, see and none, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next is staffing. You have your staffing sheet.
So the staffing sheet has one approval. We have a resignation from Mrs. Mannan, who is our library and media specialist here at Goffstown High School. She's been a great employee, she's been with us about 10 years, very innovative librarian, progressive thinker, has brought a lot of great programs, and as I understand it, moving out of the area, and we would wish her well.
All right, do I have a motion to accept her resignation with regret? By Ellen, thank you, Ginny. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. I will do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Do we have someone to replace her?
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be working on that shortly.
Okay.
And next, we have some athletic nominations for volunteers. This is another opportunity for me to again say, we have a tremendous number of volunteers in all of our co-curriculars, our athletics. And here are, you know, again, three more people who are giving their time, their talent, their expertise to the students of Goffstown and New Boston. So we have, these are returning volunteers for bowling and two for wrestling.
All right, so I'll need a motion to accept the co-curricular sports nomination by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Ginny. And I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are in non-public, but do we know?
We're going to just double-check.
All right. So other business that may legally come before the meeting? Scott, did you want to talk about the last, just to let everybody know, with this SAU budget that's in our packets? The new updated?
I just, I just provided everybody a copy of that, because I didn't provide it at the SAU meeting.
Okay. All right, anything else? And we do have non-public.
We have, we have non-public for C.
C.
I do believe it would be brief.
Okay.
So Scott, if you want to let GTV know that maybe we can finish up, and then they could come get the mics after, I do think this will be fairly quick.
Okay. So I'll need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-a32c. Matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement, or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy, if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
So move.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next is staffing. You have your staffing sheet.
So the staffing sheet has one approval. We have a resignation from Mrs. Mannan, who is our library and media specialist here at Goffstown High School. She's been a great employee, she's been with us about 10 years, very innovative librarian, progressive thinker, has brought a lot of great programs, and as I understand it, moving out of the area, and we would wish her well.
All right, do I have a motion to accept her resignation with regret? By Ellen, thank you, Ginny. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. I will do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next is staffing. You have your staffing sheet.
So the staffing sheet has one approval. We have a resignation from Mrs. Mannan, who is our library and media specialist here at Goffstown High School. She's been a great employee, she's been with us about 10 years, very innovative librarian, progressive thinker, has brought a lot of great programs, and as I understand it, moving out of the area, and we would wish her well.
All right, do I have a motion to accept her resignation with regret? By Ellen, thank you, Ginny. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. I will do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are in non-public, but do we know?
We're going to just double-check.
All right, so other business that may legally come before the meeting? Scott, did you want to talk about the last, just to let everybody know, with this SAU budget that's in our packets? The new updated?
I just, I just provided everybody a copy of that, because I didn't provide it at the SAU meeting.
Okay. All right, anything else? And we do have non-public.
We have, we have non-public for C.
C.
I do believe it would be brief. So Scott, if you want to let GTV know that maybe we can finish up, and then they could come get the mics after, I do think this will be fairly quick.
Okay. So I'll need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-a32c. Matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement, or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy, if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
So move.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are in non-public, but do we know?
We're going to just double-check.